We're going to call the public hearing of the 2018 proposed budget to order. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the 2018 proposed budget? Is there anybody that would like to speak on the 2018 proposed budget? We have to say this three times to make it official, so. Is there anybody that would like to speak on the 2018 proposed budget? Do I need a motion to close it? Motion to close?
So move.
Support. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, the brownfield plan for the St. Clair redevelopment. Is there anybody here to speak on the brownfield plan for the St. Clair Inn redevelopment? This is a, I'm going to actually take the podium for a second. This is format, how we have to do this, but many of you are familiar with the St. Clair Inn project in St. Clair. Recently, we just took a tour down there. We had probably, what, 50 people. Carrie was there along with the six out of the seven city council members in the city of St. Clair, DDA members, Rotarians, all the above. If you get a chance, you drive by the St. Clair Inn, you see the dumpsters out there, I don't think you really understand if there's, how much work's going on. And I get asked all the time in St. Clair, hey, is the thing really going to happen? Is it moving forward? Bill, you were there with us, too. So we took a walk through the project the other day. Couple of things, obviously, very noticeable. If you go around back, all the decks, porches, that stuff's totally gone, demolished. You go into the hotel, the north wing, lower level, the rooms are all gutted, studs, you know, so on and so forth. I was just in a series of meetings this morning, I was down in Romulus, actually, with the team that is going to be working on the St. Clair Inn. There's roughly 30 contractors that were in attendance today, from the mechanical, the plumbing, the heating, design, so on and so forth, talking through the project. It's obviously very near and dear to me at St. Clair, but St. Clair Inn, obviously, became a big disrepair and, you know, this investment that they're looking to put in that project somewhere in the 30 to $35 million neighborhood moving target. The plans, I recently shared the plans with the Rotary Club, I do have a copy of those if some of the commissioners would like to see that. They're doing some really, really cool stuff and it's going to arguably be the premier wedding destination for the east side of Michigan. Just some really neat stuff, so. That's my little schmear and I hope that we are able to pass the brownfield plan this evening. So is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the brownfield plan for the St. Clair Inn? One more time, anybody in attendance to talk about the brownfield plan for the St. Clair Inn redevelopment? Would like to get a motion?
So move.
In a second.
Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on. We're going to start our regular meeting. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Item three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, items A through C. Mr. Chairman.
This time I'd like to make a motion to add three A, B, and C and make that 11 S, T, and U to the agenda.
Support. All in favor.
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Support. Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, the minutes of the previous meetings, items A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and file the minutes of the October 19 commission meeting and the November 2 standing committee meetings.
Second. Discussion on any of these? All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, no proclamations. Item seven, consent agenda, items A through C.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve items 7A through 7C to the consent agenda.
Support. Discussion on any of these? All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Reports of standing and special committees, I'm going to start with Carl.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Greathop.
I'm going to take a pass tonight. Thank you.
David.
Yes, three things. I was able to take Howard's place at the parking wreck, so I got three things that they reported last night. At the Fort Grashit Beach, we've done a lot of work there and I believe the cost was $185,000. A company out of Cross Point went up there, three of the workers are from St. Clair County. And the jetties turned out extremely well. The project is complete and it turned out very well from the storms that took away the beach up there. Columbus playground equipment arrived yesterday, so that's going to be started getting installed up at Columbus. And the last one, the Fort Grashit Lighthouse, is near completion and they're going to have an open house on 12/6/17. They took the current kitchen, which was modern, and put it back to the original kitchen. So it's got the old-time kitchen and that's what they did there, put it back how it originally was.
Okay, very cool. Any questions for David? Okay. Duke?
No, sir.
I'm going to take a pass. We're going to go to item nine, citizens wishing to address the board. First one, Faith Wormsbacker, 13-935-Masters, Allington, Michigan, Ask Me member.
This is a letter for you from one of our Ask Me members, written on November 9. Dear Board Members, as you move forward in contract negotiations, I would like to draw your attention to part-time employees. Part-time employees don't have paid sick leave or paid vacation. While adding these would make current employees happier and more likely to stay, it would also make potential future employees more interested in positions with the library. In regard to paid sick leave in particular, the need is not just for employees, but for our customers as well. At present, employees are coming to work when they are ill because they have no sick leave. Working while sick makes recovery take longer, thus harms the health of the other employees. It puts our customers at considerable risk of becoming ill. Many of our customers are either very young or seniors and are more susceptible to illness. We have many patrons that visit the library while recovering from illnesses of their own that have weakened immunity, such as chemotherapy and radiation treatments for cancer. Providing paid sick leave for staff would protect the public and ensure that having contact with the county employees is safe for all. Sincerely, Rebecca Casey, Library Branch Assistant, St. Clair Branch of the St. Clair County Library System. And do I still have a couple of minutes left? Did I use all my three minutes?
Seven and 17 seconds.
A minute, oh, there we go. It's been a while since I've been up here to speak with you. We were talking, our group of ladies from Ask Me 1089, about what we wanted to talk about, and one of the things was dignity. And I'm sure for you, you would wonder, well, what does dignity have to do with our people? We treat them all well. But, I would like to ask you, when was the last time you had to ask for permission to go to the bathroom? When was the last time somebody timed you? When was the last time somebody timed you how long it took you to get there and how long it took you to get back? I'm sure each of you has filled out a form for a convention expenses, the county business, for your lunches. Anybody question you on the cost of that sandwich? Hmm. These things happen every single day. I myself, I'm two floors away from a bathroom. Either you have to hike the two floors or you have to wait for an elevator. And our nice guys that work out at Parks and Rec, sometimes they're 400 acres from a bathroom.
And if you could, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, and just think about our guys out there. You know, they're adults, they shouldn't have to be treated like that. Let you call your next person.
Julie Aleff, 2109 St. Clair Drive in Elginak, Michigan.
Julie is our librarian from St. Clair and she's also secretary of Ask Me 1089.
I'm here to make the economic case for sick leave for part-time people. Recruiting is important. Retention is even more important. We invest a great deal of money into training people on the job. For a librarian, I had somebody start and I said, it's going to take you about a year to learn this job. And they went, oh, right. A year later, I said, how you doing? And they said, oh my god, you were so right. It is a very difficult job. It's hard to get people, good people, in. And the fact of the matter is, is that when, you might think that you're saving money by not having people come in when they're sick. But the reality of the situation is that part-time people make about $18,000 a year before taxes. So after taxes, they take home about $1,000 a month. So after you take out a third to 40 percent for living expenses, that leaves $600. There isn't any one of them that isn't going to come to work sick if they can possibly make it. And what is lost is productivity of that person while they're there and they're sick, as well as the infection of the other people who are there. And it is an indignity to have to come to work with a box of Kleenex and be sick. And what we do is usually shuttle them to the back and say, you know, just do something back there so that they don't come in contact with the public, because there are people who are immune compromised. And I personally have worked with two women who have been recovering from breast cancer who would come into work after their chemo and their radiation. Why? Because they couldn't possibly afford to miss work. Now, when it comes to recruiting, what you, and retention, what you want are happy, healthy employees. And we're all aware of that through the wellness committee and through the gym that's available here. There are a number of companies who make that a priority. I don't think a fraction of a day offered to part-time people will ultimately end up in costing more because you're already paying for it in productivity.
Okay, Debbie Morgan, 2193 Dunn, part-time issues.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Morgan and I'll be reading a letter from Judy Weaver. She's also an employee at the Memphis Branch, St. Clair Library System. Dear St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, I am writing to you today to express the need for paid time off for part-time employees. I work at the Memphis Branch of the St. Clair County Library System. I enjoy my job and work hard to give our patrons exemplary customer service. It would be convenient to get sick on my days off, however, this is not always the case. At the library, we are hands-on with the public. Spreading germs cannot be helped. We handle patrons' library cards, money, computer keyboards, and materials such as books, DVDs, et cetera, not to mention sharing desks with staff. I am aware that other employers in our county give part-time workers paid sick time and vacation time. This is a benefit, however small, and also a great incentive for employees to stay at the county jobs and eliminate county expenses for turnover training. Thank you for your consideration. Judy Weaver, dated August 19, 2017.
Iris, you're up.
I'm sorry I missed last month because it was my year anniversary of coming here. And the first time I was here, we talked about what Michigan Pet Fund Alliance did, or what we do. We do education, we do advocacy, and we do training. And somehow or another, in this year, we have kind of gotten to who likes the sheriff, who's a friend of Stephanie, who's doing this and who's doing that. And I guess I didn't pay attention to it, but there were a couple of posts on Facebook that kind of brought me back to where we need to be, where I think the pet fund needs to be. One of the posts was from a volunteer who asked about going into the shelter to walk dogs. And a very nice person, who I don't know, answered them back and said, what you need to do is call the shelter, because it's raining today and they don't like to walk dogs when it rains, because they get dirty. And the other post was from a gentleman who went in or wanted to go in and walk a dog by the name of Pork Chop, and he did do that. And Pork Chop apparently gave him a hard time. And he said, hey, Pork Chop needs some training or something to help him improve. Now, it wasn't the post that disturbed me. What really disturbed me is people didn't understand how bad that situation was. And the reason they didn't understand is because as good-hearted as they are, they just are not educated in what good shelter practice is. So I brought something that I'm going to share with everybody who's interested called the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelters. And this is by the American Veterinary Association. Excuse me. And what they're talking about is not a good shelter. They're just talking about basic standards of care. I would have brought the whole thing, it's 65 pages long, but I did find what I needed. It says, animals should receive some type of positive social interaction outside of the activities of feeding and cleaning on a daily basis, like walking, playing, grooming, petting. For long-term shelter stays, appropriate levels of additional enrichment should be provided. Cats must be allowed the opportunity to exercise and explore in a secure settings. Similarly, dogs must be provided with daily opportunities for activities outside the shelter. What happens when this doesn't happen is dogs are less adoptable, because they don't know how to behave outside a cage. And in extreme cases, they get something that's called cage crazy, which is a pretty horrible thing, and they have to be put down. As I said, people are not familiar with this.
If you could wrap it up, please.
Mm-hmm. Not because they don't want to be, not because they don't have the ti, it is because they don't have the time to be. So let me go back and volunteer again. Anyone who is interested in any kind of education at all, ask me, I'll be glad to provide it. If I don't know how to provide it, I certainly know how to get it. Thank you.
Excuse me.
I'm going to make my point today very short and sweet. Back in March, we were promised policies and procedures from the St. Clair County Sheriff Animal Control. They said they would be finished and handed in to you, the board. And according to the county employee handbook, they have to be written by the head of the department, which would be the sheriff, and then handed into the board. No one has seen those. No one has even spoke about those. So no one even knows if they're completed, which I highly doubt that they actually are. That's just my two cents on it, though. But I would respectfully request to know if they have been written, presented to the board, and filed, as I cannot find them in public records anywhere. So I, and they were promised back in March by the sheriff. So it is absolutely appalling if that facility is still running without a proper policies and procedures manual, so I'm formally requesting that. So, thank you, guys.
Suzanne.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
I'm just going to talk about how small changes can have big impact. Michigan Pet Fund Alliance was rather busy last week. They went over to Santa Lake County. You see, Michigan Pet Fund Alliance has these absolutely wonderful programs where if you have innovative policies and procedures, you can qualify for grants. If you have the most improved live release rates, they'll give you money. It's absolutely wonderful. The number of animals that come and go in our shelters, they're all tracked. What their disposition outcome is, is all tracked. It's required by the state. Excuse me. There are several monetary awards that the Michigan Pet Fund Alliance has. Santa Lake is a micro shelter. As a micro shelter, they handle three counties' worth of animals. They now have a 90 percent, 96 percent live release rate. They were the most improved micro shelter. Because of this award, Michigan Pet Fund Alliance came in and gave them $1,000. $1,000 can go a long way, as far as reaching out to the community, helping to provide straw, different things that the community may need. This amazing accomplishment, I'd like to commend them for it. It is all, it is an example of how small changes can have huge impact and benefit our communities. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Just wanted to, since we've got some of the library ladies in attendance this evening, my neighbor went partially blind this past wintertime. He's an elderly gentleman and I took him up to the Port Iron Library and they helped him with the services and stuff, and he didn't really know things existed up there, and I got to commend you that. They did a great job with them. He's getting his tape sent to his house and he's just probably your biggest advocate now for the services up there and everything, so kudos to you guys. 11A, new business. Item number eight, the brownfield plan for the St. Clair Inn redevelopment.
This time I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 17-31 approving a brownfield plan by the county of St. Clair for the St. Clair Inn project.
Support. Discussion. Get to do that on a roll call. Roll call. Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item B, the clerk register scanning project.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the scanning project for the county clerk to dynamic repro graphics imaging in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Support. Discussion. Do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, I can just give you a quick 30 seconds. So as you're aware, we've moved into the world digitized documents. The next goal for the clerk's office, but it would be coupled with the 31st Circuit Court, is to, at some point, become a paperless court. So your judges would be on a bench with a tablet, or if you will, touchscreen that allows them to do that. If you look at the history, generally, a case, specifically domestic cases, those could be active for 20-plus years, 25 years. So what our goal is, is to get back to about 1998 in a fully digitized fashion, which would mean that the judge would, we wouldn't have to be worrying about having some mixed paper over here and some digitized over here. And that's what this, will close that window. So we'd be fully digitized to 1998. So every case file from 1998 forward, whether it be criminal, domestic, or civil, would be in a digitized format. Not even to mention the fact of long-term retention. You know, right now, we're in the basement. The basement at the courthouse is filled to capacity, and I'm now filling your basement up here. So, under the State Court Administrator's Office, digitized is an acceptable format for long-term retention. And it's my hope that the chief judge would sign an order that would allow us to start to be able to purge some of those documents that are in the paper format, to try to, we have about 15 million total documents, under about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet of storage. That's a lot of space and a lot of paper. And frankly, a water pipe break or sewer pipe break, and a lot of those documents would be gone forever. So my goal is to start now and over time, continue maybe to work back to get into maybe the mid-'80s or something like that. When you get past 40 years, actually, believe it or not, the state will take a lot of stuff into their, what's the right word?
Records retention.
Yeah, records retention program, historic information, so. But that's what, this is going to be the first step in that direction, to try to get to a point where we can start to get rid of some paper and have long-term retention.
Just one question. For the backup that we're going to have for this, you have an off-site and onsite backup service.
That's correct.
In case one, whatever reason, a flood takes one.
We'd have onsite, offsite. We would also have, they offer the potential to actually have a third storage in the cloud, as well as even a hard copy, CDs, those kind of things. So there's multiple, you know, redundancies, if that's a double on time, we have multiple redundancies. But that's how wonderful it is once you get digitized. It's that fear of losing that information if it doesn't happen. I appreciate your consideration on that tonight.
Okay. Any other questions for Jay? Roll call. Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item C, the 2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve fiscal year 2018 Michigan Mental Court Program contract in the amount of $260,067.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Who supported it? Carl?
Carl. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC.
This time I'd like to move to approve fiscal year 2018 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC in the amount of $25,012.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Duke. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item E, the inter-agency agreement with CMH and the Intervention Center for Inmate Mental Health Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the inter-agency agreement between Community Mental Health and Intervention Center for Inmate Mental Health Services for a term of 10/1 of 17 through 9/30 of 18 in the amount of $140,637.49.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item F, the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant.
This time I'd like to move to approve the fiscal year 2018 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant in the amount of $101,000.
Support. Roll call. Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Item G, Resolution 17-28, the Peninsula Fiber Network for Central Dispatch 911.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Resolution 17-28 approving the Peninsula Fiber Network LLC as the primary 911 service supplier.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. 2017 Annual County at Large Drain Assessments.
Chairman Bone, I'd move to adopt Resolution 17-29 approving the 2017 Annual County at Large Drain Assessment in the amount of $532,933.98.
Support. Discussion. Roll call. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes.
Item I, the 2018 Survey and Remonumentation Grant.
Chairman, at this time I move to approve the 2018 Survey and Remonumentation Grant in the amount of $89,168.
Second. Discussion. Roll call. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
The landfill materials procurement.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the supply contracts for landfill materials to Burgess Contracting Company in the amount of three hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. American Products in the amount of seventy-five thousand, I'm sorry, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And Steve Hyde Trucking in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Bill?
There was a question last week about the crushed concrete and the two different figures. I contacted Matt, he sent out an email. I'm assuming everybody got that. It was clarified.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item K, the two thousand eighteen budget proposal. Danielle, you wanna get some TV time, or are you okay?
At this time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution seventeen dash thirty-three approving the St. Clair County General Fund Budget for two thousand eighteen.
Support.
Any comments? I'd be remiss if I didn't make mine, but I'll let you go first.
I just wanna say it was, I think, very well put together. Danielle's first alone project of that magnitude, and I think she did a wonderful job. We've had a lot of conversations about it, a lot of questions were asked and answered, and I think she just did a great job, and kudos to you for that.
You sound like a broken record, but
Here it comes.
I am pleasantly surprised that Carrie and when we moved to the changes in the budgeting process, because I will tell you, being on the board thirteen years, we were in some real battles back in the day. Lot of hard feelings, everybody wanted to kill each other, it wasn't fun at all. And so, when you said you were gonna be able to take that on, work through it, so on and so forth, I didn't believe it. But, kudos to you guys, man. I haven't, I don't think I received a phone call last year, I know I didn't receive one this year, and you working with everybody and working it out has been a lot easier. I can assure you that in our position, so.
I would just like to comment that I had several questions about it and contacted the staff, and they had all the answers at their fingertips. I think it's always a good exercise for all of us to go through the budget and see how all the different departments and the different revenue sources tie together. I had some problems figuring some of it out, but Danielle was of great assistance.
Yeah, Duke.
I also had some questions. I met with Danielle tonight before the meeting, and she answered everything. I've done a lot of budgets. Obviously, this is a huge budget compared to where I came from, but I was very impressed with everything that they've done and put together, and thanks, Danielle.
David, did you have something?
Just short, I think the fiscal responsibility of the county commissioners, since, I'm gonna say with, when Bill was here, clerk included, all and crack, everybody, all the employees, everybody has assisted in the county in where it's at, in our fiscal responsibility. A lot of people have made some sacrifices during two thousand eight when we had the bottom fall out, and it's been a great county effort to be where we're at. I think everybody appreciates and thank you for their efforts.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Just one last comment. Howard and Greg, I spoke with them, they totally support everything too. They couldn't be with us this evening, but we'll say no.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item L, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Annual Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Schedule A and Stop Loss Renewal as presented.
Support.
Tompkins?
Discussion.
Dunn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item M, the Circuit Court Manning Table Request.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the revisions to the Circuit Court Manning Table, increasing one part-time judicial secretary to full-time.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item N, the Employment Agreement for Dr. Daniel Spitz for the Medical Examiner Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the employment agreement with Dr. Daniel Spitz as our county medical examiner, and this would be for a term from January first, two thousand eighteen through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Discussion. I think everybody knows that he is also the medical examiner for Macomb County, so. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item O, the Manning Table and Vehicle Fleet Changes for the Drug Task Force.
This time, I'd like to move to add a part-time public information officer position to the Drug Task Force Manning Table and approve the purchase of a patrol vehicle for the Drug Task Force.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop? Chairman?
Yes.
Bone?
P, St. Clair County Health Department Manning Table Change.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Health Department Manning Table Revision, eliminating a registered nurse position and add a public health nurse coordination position in the WIC Division.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item Q, the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association Renewal for the term one-one-eighteen through twelve-thirty-one-eighteen in the amount of eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just recalled a question I had about that. I was reading the report, and it talked about how our premium, or whatever we call it, has gone up with the addition of law enforcement officers. In the budget process, do costs for liability insurance, do they get assessed back to the different operating departments as a standalone expense?
They do get assessed back to non-general fund departments in the form of cost allocation.
But for the general fund departments, it would all be one line?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that actually, number's been fairly consistent since I've been on the board. It's always been in that eight hundred thousand, give or take range. Then there is, if we have good years because we're part of the pool, did we not receive two hundred and forty thousand dollars back last year? Somewhere in that neighborhood, it was
A little more than that.
Yeah, pretty substantial. So, if counties do well, good for us. So, okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Okay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item S, the Resolution seventeen dash twenty-seven ratifying the collective bargain agreement with the Michigan Nurse Association. I'm sorry.
R.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the Visual Command Center Subscription Emergency Management. Jeff, did you wanna say anything on it at all?
Do you have questions?
No, I don't think so. So. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the contract with Everbridge for the Visual Command Center and the renewal of the Mass Notification Alert System for a term of twelve-one-seventeen through nine-eighteen of two thousand nineteen in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Definitely.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Item S, the Resolution seventeen twenty-seven ratifying the collective bargain agreement with the Michigan Nurses Association.
I move that motion and add to it that this is Unit Two.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item T, the Resolution seventeen thirty-two ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Michigan Nurse Association, Unit One.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution seventeen twenty-two ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Nurse Supervisors Association, Michigan Nurses Association, Unit One.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item U, the Agreement for Services for the Brownfield Grant Implementation, EnviroLogic Technologies.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement with EnviroLogic Technology Incorporated for the implementation of the U.S. EPA Brownfield Coalition Assessment Grant in the amount not to exceed three hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars.
Support.
Question, yes.
Who was the author of this agreement?
The author of
Firm prepared this agreement? Was it our county civil council? Has county civil council reviewed the agreement?
Jeff, was there, can you answer?
Yeah.
I put it together and shared it with Thanks. I put together the agreement and shared it with corporation counsel and had it reviewed and recommended for approval with no changes by corporation counsel.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
I'm sorry. I put it together and passed on to corporation counsel for review. They shared with me a couple of comments, mostly grammatical changes. Those were incorporated in the copy you have in front of you, so it has been reviewed by corporation counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had actually talked to Gary on this, and as you all know, EnviroLogic had received our previous grant dollars. I've worked with them, when they say I've worked with them, but we've worked with them from the EDA to Marine City Hotel Project to deeply involved with the St. Clair Inn, the Thomas Edison Inn, Convention Center Project, you know, so on and so forth. I recently, and they've done a great job, everybody at the state knows them, you know, all that good stuff, right? Part of my thoughts was this time going around, do we try to get another service provider? You know, that you're working a couple of them and stuff, okay? So, and I had talked with Jeff about this, I talked to Dave Struck about it. Some of the larger counties do that, that have full-time dedicated staff, that the Brownfield, you know, I mean, he's our Brownfield guy, but he does eighteen other things too, you know? And just being able to administer it, they handle all the administration of the program, everything from A to Z. And to be quite frank, it doesn't become, you know, a pain in, you know, the you-know-what for the metropolitan planning to administer and do those things. And our planning department tends to become the catch-all for a lot of these things that we do today, right? I mean, the counties
Important things.
Important things. But, and while we're dealing with the cities a lot more, we're assisting the smaller communities just because they just don't have the level, you know, I mean, the number-two people, the three people in a lot of these organizations don't exist anymore, so the county is very involved. Planning's right there at the table to assist with them. When I traveled to Washington three months ago or so, I was talking to the Jackson County Board Chairperson, the Kalamazoo, there was a section that had Brownfields, they had brought it up, so I did a sidebar, and it was interesting that EnviroLogic was their consultants. And how happy that they were. And recently, I just traveled up to Lewinow Peninsula because St. Clair Inn owner's working on a project up there and, you know, went up and spoke, and hence, they do Lewinow County's programs and stuff. So, you know, they know their way around. I can't deny it. I think to try to split it up with a couple, to then create more of an administrative pool of work that would then hence fall back on their laps would be probably adding additional level of work. And so, I'm very comfortable with EnviroLogic. And, you know, when they get the things done, and the state's approving them, and it's happening, it's, these Brownfield things are critical to making these projects happen, you know? Think about the Marine City Hotel, no crap gas station, right? Tore down, built it, four million dollars later, I know what's going on in St. Clair, you know, Thomas Edison Inn, some of these other projects. We've really got some pretty good bang for our buck out of this stuff, so enough of me. Any other questions at all, or?
I'd just say, you know, attending some of the MAC meetings, when there are issues about environment, they usually have somebody on the panel.
Yeah.
And the other reason I raise the question, I've gotten so used to reading the agreements that our corporate counsel writes. I could tell this was not their format that they usually use. And so, that told me that maybe somebody else wrote it, and I'm glad to hear that Jeff was involved with it. I get kinda nervous if you hear that the contractor wrote it, so.
No, no, no.
Thank you for responding to that question.
Absolutely. And just to add, if I may, to what Commissioner Bone added, certainly, the workload that would be brought on, if we weren't able to bring on a consultant who could help with the administration of the grant would be great, and it would take away from other programs or area, program areas our department is involved in. We had a committee that went through the review process. We had several proposals that came in, we narrowed it down to three firms interview, we interviewed those three. And really, this, one of the major reasons behind the selection that we made is not just what they could do with the technical implementation of the grant dollars, i.e. conducting phase ones and phase twos, because let's face it, there's a thousand and one firms out there, you can pick up the phone and say, I need a phase one or a phase two done, and they can do it. It's what else they, the firms that we interviewed, what else they could bring to the table. And as we've learned with some of the projects that happened in St. Clair County, like the St. Clair Inn, like the hotel down in Marine City, like what's going on in downtown Port here on, Brownfield projects and Brownfield involvement is sometimes the first in on an economic development project because it's dealing with acquisition and liability issues and due care issues that take place right when a developer's looking at a project and is trying to acquire it. That's when they're saying, hey, I've got a gap here. I mean, I wanna address this redevelopment, I wanna take care of this problem that nobody else wants to take care of, but there's a huge gap here, and I need, there's, we need some other resources brought to the table to help us bridge that gap. What we looked at is firms that have experience doing that. And what we found in the selection and the recommendation that we made to you this evening is the firm that we feel that we've recommended has the most experience in being able to deliver that and bring that to the table, that leveraging dollars. And that really holds true with our last grant, which was a million-dollar grant. A million dollars is a lot of dollars spent on our community, but when we added it all up and all the projects it was involved in, it leveraged over a hundred million dollars. So, the ability to leverage those dollars and the skills beyond just the technical implementation of the grant, i.e. phase ones, phase two environmental site assessments, is critical to success of the grant. And that's why the recommendation you have
Funny you mention that. So, we're in a meeting today on the St. Clair Inn, the historical gal, they did the, they're in a bad way. They went in and did the environmental, they did the phase one, the phase two, they did all the hazardous environmental work, so on and so forth. And really, that at the time was to help clear the hurdles for a potential buyer developer because nobody wants to spend a bunch of money and wait four months to do this stuff. They were talking today about the historical part, there's a building, they need bricks ironically, you know? Old bricks that were from the same year that the inn was built, back in nineteen twenty-seven. There's bricks across the street in a building that is a teardown, but you need to have an asbestos survey done on the bricks. And EnviroLogic was in the meeting today, they said, we got that already, we can share that with you. And they were freaking out because they couldn't maybe not get enough bricks for the historical piece. I mean, you get in these historical things, I learned a lot today, boy, I mean, it's, you gotta do it to the original, you can't, you know, you gotta do it to the T. And if you don't, the potential grant dollars, long and short of it, for that project are at risk. And I just found that amazing, but hence, hey, we got that already to go and stuff, and that was hence via through their work, so.
Speaking of EnviroLogic, one of the things that I liked about them is they play well with other people. By that, I mean when you're sitting around the table, as we did with the inn in Marine City, and in part, the little part that I've been on the hotel or the St. Clair Inn, is that they play very well at the table. They have a role, they know their role, and they stick to their role, but they also reach out and support other people. And so, everybody around the table does their part, and they're one of the players I've always thought did their part very, very well. So, I know that we can work with them.
Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Administrators' report.
I just have a short, brief report tonight. Our